Welcome to the August 14, 2024 City Council Meeting. We're going to begin with the invocation from Councilman Curtis. Thought about the pledge. Please stand.
Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to serve our community in this meeting today. As council members, we acknowledge the responsibility that we're given and humbly ask for your wisdom in making our decisions today. We ask for your blessings and protection for the city of Tyler first responders, for our staff, and all of our citizens. Lord, all of us in Tyler, in Smith County, in Texas, and the United States, we ask that you would help us make the decisions that you intend for us to make and be the people that you intend for us to be. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with the minutes from the June 26, 2024 City Council Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKellar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. P1, Mr. Broussard.
Good morning.
Good morning, Whitehead.
Good morning.
Mayor Warren and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to present our proposed $255.9 million budget for the coming fiscal year. Last year, we focused on becoming future-ready through top-tier police and fire service, better traffic flow, improved drainage systems, upgraded water and sewer systems, and state-of-the-art tourism facilities. In many instances, we adopted new technology to increase resources to our public servants that enhance our citizens' quality of life. The budget serves as a roadmap for the next 12 months based on our past experiences and future forecasts. This year, we will build on our past progress by finding efficiencies, streamlining services, and investing heavily in capital projects to benefit all of Tyler. While we can't predict all challenges ahead, our annual budget will help us navigate them, advancing our vision for a strong community with a vibrant business environment, quality medical care, excellent education, and beautiful public spaces and neighborhoods. In our public safety departments, we're focusing on significant investment in state-of-the-art equipment and training. For our Tier 1 fire department, this includes authorizing the purchase of a new fire engine and new ladder truck. Although these vehicles will not be available for about 38 to 40 months, financing plans are in motion with options for a 10-year term with annual payments. By locking in payments now, we reduce future costs that continue to climb with fire truck procurement. The proposed budget includes plans to purchase new equipment for our fire department. The first is a Class A burn building, a portable structure that allows for specialized training in real-life fire scenarios. This addition to the current training facility will allow us to keep our training in-house. The second addition into the proposed budget is to allow for the purchase of specialized equipment for Tyler Fire to participate in the Texas Interstate Fire Mutual Aid System, or TIFMS. TIFMS is a Texas A&amp;M Forestry Service program that allows cities to loan firefighters and equipment to other municipalities in times of need. The program includes grant opportunities, specialized training, qualification opportunities, and mobilization systems to make use of local resources. Finally, as part of the HAFSENT work plan, we'll begin work on acquiring property for the new regional fire training facility and begin planning for the construction of a new fire station number two. For our police department, the HAFSENT work plan contains plans for converting the old National Guard armory into a regional training facility at a cost of $1.3 million. This new hub will be the cornerstone of learning and preparedness for our police force. We will equip our officers with the best and latest technology by continuing the Axon program that immediately replaces any damaged or out-of-date body cameras, tasers, or other equipment. Patrol cars will also receive dual SIM card upgrades, enhancing communication and efficiency. Meanwhile, we'll run fiber internet to the Tyler PD gun range, solving connectivity issues and improving those training facilities. Finally, we plan to hire two new police officers for the downtown beat. Contention on funding from the COPS grant that we have asked for consideration of and approval from the Downtown Tours Fund. These officers will be dedicated to public safety in our downtown area. At the animal shelter, we will begin upgrading our kennels to improve capacity, provide better living conditions for our furry friends, and creating a more inviting space for potential adopters. At the same time, we have earmarked funds for the demolition of substandard commercial structures. This initiative is crucial for improving community safety by reducing health hazards and preventing illegal activities. By clearing these properties, we not only improve neighborhood aesthetics but also free up space for new developments, boosting community morale, and encouraging economic growth. Together, these efforts reflect our commitment to public safety and overall well-being of our community. We are excited to begin Phase 1 of our downtown improvements project. Over the next three years, $25.7 million will transform the heart of our city, starting with a $10.3 million investment from the HAFSENT fund in fiscal year 2025. The west side of the square will see expanded green space and right-of-way improvements, all without closing streets, ensuring a seamless experience for residents and visitors. Increased tourism, better walkability, more residential development, and support for local businesses are key benefits. Additionally, enhanced lighting and traffic flow will improve public safety. These changes will create a vibrant, attractive, and economically robust downtown for Tyler. In this fiscal year, we will complete the trailhead for legacy trails at the future location of Stewart Park on Frankston Highway. The legacy trail system serves all of Tyler by connecting parks, neighborhoods, and commercial areas. This budget includes funding in the Parks Capital Improvement Fund of $775,000 to assist with improvements to landscaping, restrooms, facilities, and fascinage that will enhance the overall accessibility and connectivity of the trail network, encouraging more residents and visitors to use the trails in Stewart Park for recreational activities. We also continue to invest in improved resource management at our parks, especially as we continue to respond to extreme weather events. Our Parks Team will purchase a dump trailer and grapple to streamline debris removal, enhance landscaping efforts, save time and labor, and increase worker safety. This investment ensures our parks are clean, safe, and attractive for our community. We completed the WT Brookshire Conference Center in 2023 and finished restoration of the historic May Fair Dance Hall this past spring. As we continue to improve the rose complex, we have planned upgrades to the Tyler Rose Garden in the proposed budget. This year, we will continue the replacement of the old wooden borders with durable, attractive stay-up concrete, improving the garden's maintenance, efficiency, and aesthetic appeal. Due to the extreme weather conditions of the last few years and the necessity to enhance our primary tourist attraction, we will also hire a dedicated horticulturist for the rose garden. This expert will ensure the ongoing health and vibrancy of over 38,000 rose bushes, maintaining the garden's status as one of the largest and most beautiful municipal rose gardens in the United States. Finally, as the East Texas State Fair found a new home, we will begin demolition of the outdated fairground facilities. This project will open space for future improvements and better align with the area with the overall vision for the complex. We are adding an additional crew leader to our tree crew at no cost by freezing the currently unfilled Brick Street Crew Leader. We have been pleased with the work provided by our local contractor on the Brick Street repairs, and funding for Brick Street repairs will continue through the Street Improvement Fund. This year, we will put $869,772 directly towards the rehabilitation of our historic brick streets. We're also converting four existing labor positions within the department to semi-skilled labor positions. This change will improve hiring and retention of skilled crews, where we have dedicated two cents from the tax rate specifically for maintenance and repair. This year, that total will be approximately $1.4 million for preventive maintenance through our crack seal program to our city streets. Another $14.5 million will be allocated from our HAFSENT sales tax fund for roadway improvements. On the traffic side, we are converting a vacant sign marker staff position to an administrative coordinator. This change will provide better overall efficiency and coordination within our traffic team. As part of our 10-year Intelligent Traffic System Plan, we are also increasing funding for our traffic signal maintenance. This continued investment will ensure our traffic signals are well-maintained and operating efficiently, improving safety and flow on our roads. Since 1995, Tyler's HAFSENT Sales Tax Fund has financed capital projects so that our residents can enjoy a low property tax rate that does not pay toward interest or project debt. For fiscal year 2025, we expect to fund around $41.5 million cash for capital projects. Our project list includes the fifth year of our Traffic Signal Modernization Plan, focusing on equipment upgrades to improve traffic flow, and multiple drainage and erosion projects throughout the city. Further details on the HAFSENT project schedule will be presented at the next City Council meeting. Tyler Water Utilities is investing in equipment and training to enhance safety and security across our water and wastewater operation sites. We are adding tenable SCADA software to safeguard our water plants and equipment from cyber threats. Customer service will also improve with the addition of Boomerang messaging software for secure text updates to our water customers. In fact, customer service is at the forefront of our $50 million investment into water and wastewater capital projects for this year. Notably, the council approved $3.4 million from federal grant funds to kickstart a water meter replacement program in December 2023. As part of the upcoming budget, we will add an additional $1 million to replace an additional 3,000 meters, for a total of 11,000 meters to be changed out during the next calendar year. Other projects this year also includes our taste and odor technologies evaluation and pilot study at the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant, adding an additional elevated storage tank on the west side of our city, repair and repaint on the west Second Street elevated storage tank, demolition of the south Glenwood ground storage tank, and continued replacement of the 2-inch water line so that every corner of Tyler receives reliable water pressure. On the wastewater side, our improvements extend to the treatment plants and beyond, connecting all of Tyler through projects that enhance capacity, improve efficiency, and secure our future ability to reliably serve Tyler as we grow. As we move into the coming year, Tyler is initiating vital stormwater projects that will prepare our community for the emergencies that nature throws our way. The addition of a stormwater compliance technician and the conversion of an existing unfilled position to an administrative assistant will improve our ability to respond effectively. Enhancing culverts, improving drainage, and setting funds aside for emergency repairs will strengthen our city's preparedness and response. These efforts are not more than just projects, they're part of the larger story of resilience through preparation. Through planning, preserving our historic resources, and strengthening our staff's expertise, we lay the foundation for a thriving community that honors our past while embracing the future. We are excited to announce that we will update Tyler's comprehensive plan, including a community survey, the first since 2007. The fiscal year 2025 budget includes funding for one year of the multi-year process that will spend time speaking with the community, assessing past and future trends, and looking at future land use goals to put together to a vision that all of Tyler can strive to reach. In addition to the comprehensive plan, we will also conduct a historic resource survey documenting Tyler's historic buildings, sites, and districts. The inventory will provide valuable information for future preservation efforts, helping to maintain the unique character and history of our community. These investments in development and growth are critical to shaping a vibrant, sustainable, and resilient Tyler. In 2025, we will move forward with the second phase of the 2023 compensation plan that will ensure non-civil service employees are within 10% of market rate for their position. All civil service employees were brought to 100% of their market rate last year as part of Phase 1. We aim to keep our talent and attract the best as we recruit for vacancies. To do that, we will offer a 3% base rate, a base pay increase to civil service staff, and our non-civil service staff will receive up to a 3% base rate pay increase determined by their annual performance evaluations. For fiscal year 2025, sales tax revenue is the main source of funding for our general fund, which supports essential services like police, fire, parks, municipal court, animal control, streets, library, and traffic control. Property taxes, which I'll discuss shortly, account for about 32% of the general fund budget. It's important to note that while we aim to retain and attract high-quality personnel and equip them properly, property tax revenue covers less than half of the police and fire department's expenses. Therefore, we continue to seek additional revenue sources such as franchise fees, grants, and other opportunities to support our general fund services. Before we discuss the proposed property tax rate, let's look at how taxable rates have changed. Typically, property tax values increase by about 3% to 4% per year. Occasionally, we've seen higher increases due to rare additions to the tax rolls. For example, in fiscal year 2020, values rose by 6% because ETMC properties changed from non-taxable to taxable with the purchase by Arden. But overall values historically returned to that 3% to 4% range. The past three years have been different. Our average increase in property tax values have been about, have been 10.94% annually. This year, taxable values grew by 10%. It's important to remember that changes in taxable values vary for each property. Your neighbors may differ significantly from yours. Because of these differences, the proposed tax rate will affect each property owner differently based on the average changes in appraised value. The current property tax rate is 24.792 cents per $100 valuation, and we are proposing a rate of 24.0085 cents per $100 valuation to support the enhanced services in this proposed budget. Due to state legislation in 2019, municipalities now need an automatic election for property tax increases over 3.5%, down from 8% to what it was previously. Our proposed rate is 3.5% above the no new revenue rate of 23.1319 cents per $100 valuation. This is due to the growth in property values. While the rate is decreasing, overall tax levies are increasing due to the growth in property tax values. For fiscal year 2025, projected property taxes total about $30.5 million, accounting for 32% of the general fund. This is a $1.7 million increase from last year, which will go to the operation of city services. It should be noted that even with the proposed increase, property taxes only cover 80% of the funding requirement for the Tyler Police Department. Texas promotes utility rates that encourage water conservation, and beginning in fiscal year 2023, we began converting our declining rate structure to a flat volumetric rate structure. We have completed Phase 2 of our uniform volumetric rate conversion and will implement Phase 3 in 2025. At the end of this process, each gallon of water consumed will cost the same. This and our $50 million capital improvement, capital project investment for water and sewer improvements this year are necessary to maintain and improve service quality. To support these initiatives, we propose a $2.50 increase to the water base rate and a $4.30 increase to the sewer base rate for the standard 5/8-inch meter on most residential properties. Because meter sizes can vary, these increases will be variable due based on the meter size of the customer. Volumetric rates are also, will also increase per Phase 3 of the adoption. The average residential customer using 8,000 gallons of water per month will see about a $19.06 total increase on their utility bill. There'll be no increase to the regulatory compliance fee in 2025, which holds a $19.70. This fee is tied to the debt for the estimated $250 million the city will pay for EPA consent decree work on the wastewater collection system. During fiscal year 2024, we contracted with an outside consultant to perform a rate study for Tyler Water Utilities. In 2024, the council received master plan presentations for both the water and wastewater systems of Tyler. A major part of these presentations focused on the capital improvement needs for our current water and wastewater infrastructure. These improvements included the major investments on the west side wastewater treatment plant that have an estimated cost of over $96 million, approximately $75 million for investment in maintaining the water distribution infrastructure, and $67 million in investments for our water treatment facilities. When creating the proposed rates, we took those capital needs into consideration and created a rate structure that supports the work that need must be done now and should be done in the future to maintain quality services for our rate payers. We are proposing a CPI increase of 4% to all of our solid waste rates. This would increase the residential waste collection bill by 91 cents. For our approximately 31,000 customers, we offer premium service with twice-weekly collections at a low monthly rate. Our solid waste staff consistently receive high marks in citizen surveys, delivering top-notch rated services and demonstrating their commitment to outstanding customer care. Due to the fire at Rivers Recycling Center, we do not anticipate curbside recycling programs to return for at least a year. These customers that participate in this service will remain on the list but will not be billed. Citizens who wish to continue recycling can bring their recycling to the Tyler Recycling Center on Bodar. Finally, I would like to go over a few other fees that we are proposing for fiscal year 2025. We recognize that with the lowest tax rate in the state, we have to look for alternative needs for funding the programs and services we provide for our community. The first is instating a commercial fire safety inspection fee. This fee will be $50, and will be an annual inspection of all commercial properties by our fire department. We will be certifying our fire captains to perform these inspections. These inspections will focus on helping businesses find areas that could be fire hazards, as well as helping our firefighters understand the layout of the business in case of a fire. The second is restructuring the special event permit fee for our parks. As we have looked into the usage of our parks for events, we noticed that the family celebrating a birthday at a picnic table in the park pays the same for the permit as an event that sets up booth over the entire park. Currently, the fee for the park's special event permit is $50. We are proposing restructuring of the fee that would create a tiered system and a tiered structure that would start at $50 and cap at $300. We are also looking at restructuring the fee for commercial permits in our Building Services Department. Currently, we have a tiered system for calculating the cost of permits for commercial projects. We are proposing converting that from a tiered fee structure to a flat fee of $5 for every $1,000 evaluation. Finally, we are proposing to increase the fees on various zoning and variance-related application fees by $150. This increase is directly related to the increasing cost of posting the required notices for zoning and variance items in the newspaper and other publications as required by state As per the budget and tax rate adoption schedule for state statutes, the council has two actions that it must take today. It must adopt a proposed rate that becomes the ceiling for consideration and further debate and to use for publication purposes. And the council must set a public hearing for the budget and tax rate. Staff recommends holding the public hearings at your next regularly scheduled City Council meeting on August 28th and the second public hearing at your meeting on September 11th. We expect to bring the tax rate and the budget to the council for adoption at your meeting on September 11th. I do want to extend my deep appreciation to my budget team of Kedrick Trimble, Stephanie Franklin, Law &amp; Justice, for their countless hours of taking the budget proposals from each department and working to refine these into the document we have for review today. In addition, I note the incredible work in showcasing our budget story, as shown in this presentation developed by Julie Goodgame, Adriano Rodriguez, and Blake Kathy. I also provide my gratitude to you, the City Council. You provided direction and deliberations and priorities and conversations and ideas throughout the year that set the stage for the budget that we have provided. Our focus on employees, infrastructure, public safety, and continuous improvement of our services reflects your vision for this community. I thank you for your service and insight on behalf of the citizens of Tyler. It is a privilege to serve you and present this budget for fiscal year 2025, programs and services for your consideration.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone have any comments or questions for City Manager?
I just appreciate the staff's hard work in putting this together. It's a great presentation.
Yeah, great job.
I totally agree. And what do you call, what do you call the name of this budget? Last year was future-ready, and this year it's what?
This year is all of Tyler.
And that's what it is. When you look at this budget and what it pertains to, it is for all of Tyler, whether it's your traffic, infrastructure, water, sewer, whatever it is. I mean, we're talking about all of Tyler, and I really appreciate the efforts and the philosophy of taking care of the citizens all over the community. So I also want to thank Kedrick and all the staff for what you've done for this process. It's been good.
Thank you.
Now, no other questions? I don't have any cards for anyone on this item. I do have a card from Darrell Davis, but it just says you have a public comment.
I want to publicly speak, sir.
We don't, I'm sorry, we don't have a public comments period or section in the City Council meeting. You have to speak to in the agenda item. So if you want to speak to the budget or speak to a future item like M1 or M2...
M1.
M1? Okay.
There's also action that council needs to take today. You can feel Kedrick's breath on my neck. So he is here to help walk us through the actions that go along with the item.
Okay, we're good. Kedrick.
Mayor and Council, you have three actions that we need you all to take on this agenda item. The first action is I need a motion to accept the presentation of the fiscal year 24, 25 proposed budget.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKellar. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item two, I need a motion to schedule public hearings on the proposed property tax rate of 24.0085 cents per $100 of assessed value and the proposed budget on the August 28th and September 11th, '24 council agenda.
I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKellar. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, third and final action, I need a motion to place proposal to adopt an avalerum tax rate of 24.0085 cents per $100 of assessed value and the fiscal year 24, 25 budget as an action item on the September 11th, '24 city council agenda.
I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by McKellar, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Nichols.
Do we read the second? Sorry, you're a long way over there. So we had a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kedrick. All right, moving on to M1. Heather.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
I'm happy to bring to you today a request to update our comprehensive plan. Our last comprehensive plan originally started out as Tyler 20, or 21, and that was adopted in 2007. We are quickly approaching our 20-year anniversary of the adoption of that plan, and we have substantially completed the associated implementation items from that plan. We went through an RFP process, and we received several submittals, and we had a review committee that reviewed the submittals. We had some great submittals. And in looking through those submittals and our vision for what we needed for, you know, a contemporary plan, we are recommending Fries and Nichols along with some subconsultants, half-associates, as well as TXP Economic, which really focuses on economic analysis, and then ETC, which does our scientific survey, which we have done throughout all of our updated comprehensive plans over recent years to really get a feel of our community sentiment. So just to give a reason why. Why is comprehensive planning important for our community? Since the adoption of our current plan in 2007, communities have experienced significant changes, whether those changes be in technology, social, and commercial interactions, the economy. For example, did you know that in 2007, that's when the first iPhone came out? It's hard to believe. I don't know that I remember a time when I had my iPhone, but that happened the same year that our plan was adopted. And just that small, that change in technology had a significant impact on how we function, how we do business. The, you know, in 2011, Pew Research found that only 35% of us had an iPhone, or a smartphone, I should say. And then in 2018, that jumped up to 80%. Generative AI, and that just happened in the last couple of years. We haven't even begun to understand the impacts of that on our daily life and how we work, but we expect that that will have some changes, you know, in how that can maybe make some work efficiencies. Streaming service, Netflix, also, its streaming service can... Streaming service, Netflix also, its streaming service came out in 2007. Just think about that. Before then, we might have gone to a video store and picked out a DVD and now we're just sitting on the couch and renting our movies or whatnot. And then we had our changes to the workplace through the pandemic in 2020 that really accelerated the adoption of remote work. And, you know, when we tie that to land use and the development and growth in our communities, you know, that did have a significant impact on our business, you know, structures. We saw some of that along Earl Campbell where we had a medical business park and, you know, they predominantly went to a remote work scenario. So, you know, how are these technological, you know, advances and changes that we've experienced, how are they impacting our development and growth in our communities? So the gig economy, you know, Uber and Airbnb, they came out in 2008 and 2009. That also has made an impact on our communities as well. So with that, we are looking at, you know, an approach to looking at future land use that supports flexible certainty to our land use decisions that is market responsive, you know, because of the changes that we're experiencing and, you know, the inflation and then the availability of housing in our community, we need the flexibility. Also, updates to some area development plans, notably to our midtown plan, looking at the changes that have happened in our medical district and, you know, how that integrates with downtown. Also looking at policy frameworks for future transportation and infrastructure and facilities that, you know, the comprehensive plan is a way for us to have a decision-making tool that helps us make appropriate decisions and being responsive, fiscally responsive in those decisions. And then accordingly, with a, you know, a rewrite of a comprehensive plan, you also have a rewrite of your unified development code. And that is really responsive to, okay, what is the community's vision? What do we want to see for the growth and development in our community? And how do our codes need to be changed to reflect that vision? So going back to our timeline, this is typically an 18-month process. We are looking at a, you know, kind of an internal kickoff in October. Really, the first part of this process is data gathering and analysis. And then we really anticipate more of a public-facing kickoff at the beginning of the year. It will have a significant public participation process as we did in our original Tyler 21 process. And no general fund dollars will be used for this plan. This is coming out of the Development Services Fund. And we also are going to be seeking a general land office grant that we anticipate maybe getting around two seventy-five, three hundred thousand for that grant. So we will be trying to submit for that and hopefully we are successful. We plan to wrap up this plan by May of, or April, actually, of 2026. This plan will cover over three fiscal years, but the overall cost in total is at seven hundred and fifty thousand. So with that, the recommendation is for the council to consider authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services contract with Fries Nichols in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand to provide for a new comprehensive master plan for the city of Tyler. And we also have representatives from FNI and HAF here if you have any additional questions.
All right, any questions for Heather?
One question, Mr. Mayor. Heather, did any of these consultants group work on the original plan in 2007?
Yes, they did.
Any other questions for Heather? All right, I do have a couple of cards. Mr. Lance Phillips, would you like to come on up?
I'm setting a timer here.
If, to center, if you can do a timer for three minutes and if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Lance Phillips, 131 County Road 37, Tyler, Texas 75706. Thanks for your time, guys. Good morning, members of the board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today about a critical issue of mental illness. Mental health is a complex and multifaceted issue that affects countless individuals and families across our community and nation. We are fed this headline of mental illness affects one in five people, but what they never speak of is the police officers that are on the force with mental illness. Some of you may know instances that I'm speaking of here in Smith County where we have neurodegenerative disorder, which can lead to onset dementia. And we've got board members across the street over here. We've got judges in the courthouse that are presenting mental illness, arresting the district clerk, county clerk, another court-appointed attorney, Miss Melontry. They arrested her. I would like to address also the suicide rates among our active-duty personnel, including PTSD and depression. It's disheartening to note that the medications prescribed to them while intended to help come with severe side effects, including an increased risk of suicidal thoughts and actions. This is a crisis that demands our immediate attention. Another pressing issue is our mental health care system, particularly the role of county courts and medical professionals. There have been disturbing instances where individuals are declared mentally incompetent to stand trial, not based on genuine medical assessments, but rather their means to manipulate illegal outcomes. This is a deliberate attempt by judges to withhold information and obstruct justice. This corruption undermines the trust in both our legal and medical institutions and has profound implications on the rights and lives of individual. I can attest to the gravity of this issue. I have, it is a fact, had I had failed the doctor's examination when they tried to have me declared mentally incompetent, I would have rotted in the county jail for three years waiting on a bed to become available where I could be forced drugged and medicated. This is one of the sickest things that I have witnessed throughout my whole ordeal with Smith County. Right now, I'm facing life in prison for the lies that the head of courthouse security has written on a government document saying that I assaulted him, all because I came to a board meeting just like this to speak, right? So when he caused me to bleed at two different places in my body. Also, I was speaking out about a man named Nathan Lee Johns that had died in our jail. Forgive me, I'm gonna skip. I want to touch also on a controversial topic. You can watch this video, choice42.com. Vaccines given to newborns contain DNA from the opposite sex contributing to an increase...
Can we keep it on topic? I breathe it mental health.
For sure. This is the master plan. This is the master plan, right? Yeah. Understand, it is crucial that we approach this topic with an open mind and a commitment to understanding the truth and rigorous research. If any of you guys can talk to the people at the mental health board, I'd like to be nominated to put on that.
Thank you. And I will say this, you know, you're right, mental health is an issue and healthcare is part of the comprehensive plan. So thanks for your comments. All right, we also have Darryl Davis, if you wish to come up? If we can, please keep it on topic and if you can state your name and address for the record.
I know where I'm at. I know where I'm going. How y'all doing?
Can you get in front of the microphone, sir?
I would like to hand this out to a real and true person around because I couldn't get it on camera.
Name and address for the record, please.
I am Darryl L. Davis, Tyler, Texas, 2719 Plaza Avenue, Tyler, Texas 75702. I'm a pro representing myself and equality and justice for all DLD. I'm a pro about a situation that's going on in my community at the glass center. Our fishing pond over there is a disgrace. I sit up here this morning and I listen to north of a billion dollars and have sales taxes going to different entities around, but when y'all look at those pictures and what we have to survive at our glass center as far as a fishing pond, it's unacceptable for this city to a way they want to beautify everything else but what's on the north side. And today, I'm speaking up for those who don't know how to speak up or those who don't want to speak up, but it's a disgrace that our kids have lost everything, including fishing privileges, where they cannot fish peacefully. And it stinks around there and it might be a grave sewage issue in there. It's a health issue that needs to be expeditionally taken care of. And that's all I need on this topic. And we'll address what's next. And I'll just wait till the pictures come around and if anyone has any questions, I'm And that's the best that my print machine would do, but I would like to invite everyone in this room to go out and take a look at that glass center pond. Everyone, please. No, I'm through speaking. I'm just waiting on my documents, sir.
Okay.
And if anyone has any questions, I will take them. But if not, I'm through.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, sir.
We'll get them back to you.
Thank you.
All right, another person we have is Mark Priest, which is here just for questions, unless you want to speak or you're good. All right. All right, I'll entertain a motion on M1.
Move to approve M1.
Second. Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. M2.
Good to see you all this morning. Here to talk about railroad crossings. We want some improvements. We all know we need improvements. As many of y'all may remember, we originally were going to do an inventory of all railroad crossings and all the safety equipment and the condition of each one of these. We were actually able to save money. The NPO decided to do that and they included the whole county, so we were able to save about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us having to do that. So what I'd like to do here is we took that inventory and are prioritizing some of the items there along with other items like our downtown improvements and the courtyard, excuse me, courthouse, the Smith County courthouse. So what we're going to do is we're going to make improvements to four railroad crossings. Three of them are in downtown, which would be the Locust, Ferguson, and Irwin crossings. We were going to make those two-way because many of you may remember the 2022 tool did a design, the tool design group did a downtown square and Broadway Avenue conceptual design report that recommended changing all the downtown streets to two-ways. And this is in response to that. So what we want to do is knowing that UP Railroad takes, it's going to take us 18 to 24 months just to get an approved set of plans. There are five submittals, three agreements we have to look at in there along with just the amount of time and effort involved in working with them. Everybody knows that UP Railroad is not going to make it easy. They're going to drag it out. So we want to go ahead and get this design started so we can get the design finished, plans approved, permit, and then go ahead and get construction so we can be close to or shortly thereafter when the courthouse is open and fully constructed along with the downtown improvements. That is our intention with starting now. So as you can tell, the three downtown have different existing, anywhere from a truss arm there on Irwin to just a sign there at Ferguson, and then we have the arm there at Locust. So those will be one set of plans we will get approved and then the second set of plans we will get approved to go from one-way to two-way. We'll have a separate set of plans here at Lake Street. Everyone knows the Lake Street has more of a ramp effect than anything else. We've had a lot of issues with that, a lot of complaints about it, especially from the ambulance drivers about this. So we will be fixing the grade issues and just improving the crossing right there. So that'll be another set of plans. It'll all happen at the same time. What we've done is we, HDR did the inventory and we were very impressed with their information and the people that they had working in their railroad design group, including somebody in their home office there that used to actually manage the design group at UP Railroad, the engineering design group. So he knows who to talk to, what to ask them, how to ask them, and when to ask them and all those little video secreties that should make the process so much better. So all this to say, it'll be about 18 to 24 months, up to 30 during, you know, in construction and this does include some construction, but the design fee is about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars for this because of just the time and effort and amount and expenses involved. I'm asking for 600 because a couple of these items are on a time and materials basis up to a maximum. So that way, in case we do need to end up going over just on these time and materials, there's a little bit of cushion in there. So any questions right now?
A question for Darren. What will, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What will we do? So we could run into a situation down there where we're ready to change the flow, the street pattern, traffic flow, but we don't have the approval to do so at these. We'll just go forward and wait, I guess, until such time that we do have it?
There's an option whether, and we'll make that decision when the time gets closer, but we could just stop it at Fanning, the two-way. We can stop it at Fanning right there, which is the main entrance into the new parking garage and the back entrance to the courthouse. We could stop it there and just make it east as still as one-way until we get this complete or we can just keep it all one-way until it's all ready. So we will probably really end up making that decision.
Because they don't have to meet our schedule.
Correct. They meet their own schedule.
Are these railroad improvements just for downtown or?
Just the Lake Street and the three downtown.
Darren, just for information purposes, how many trains travel on those tracks daily?
Daily or weekly? We have about one a week.
Okay. Because I get questioned, why do we have them still? We don't ever hear a train or see a train. They are still active.
They are still active and as long as UP Railroad has revenue coming in through this, they have no desire nor incentive to take it out of service.
Well, the Lake Street improvement, well, kudos on that because the hospitals and businesses over there constantly contact people about that. Yes.
Any other questions for Darren? All right, I'll entertain the motion for M2.
Move to approve M2. Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're down to the consent agenda. Intervene to approve this presented.
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. City manager's report.
Mayor and council, and so a few items to note to kind of bring forward. On August 7th, the Main Street Program hosted the Texas Historical Commission Main Street Accreditation Team for their onsite visit and accreditation meeting. Purpose of the meeting was to explain updates to the Main Street America accreditation process, discuss the objective of the thriving Main Street program, provide guidance within our downtown district, and celebrate the successes of the City of Tyler Main Street Program. On, in May of this year, the Tyler Main Street Program was accredited for the 12th year in a row. During the meeting, the accreditation team informed that Tyler, the group that Tyler is among the highest-scoring Main Street Programs. And it's especially noted that Tyler had one of the top scores in the standard or the strategy-driven programming, strategy-driven programming standard, which is a credit to you as council, as well as your Main Street Board and staff in that they understand that the fact that the vision that is provided and what it leads to, especially in relationship to our downtown and our Main Street area. You may have seen, you walked in, kind of a big old screen, and that's not the newest size iPad, but what that is, is our IT department has worked very hard to create a state-of-the-art 55-inch touch display kiosk system specifically designed to improve accessibility, enhance the delivery of public services. This innovative kiosk, which is fully compliant with the American with Disabilities Act, ensures that all community members, regardless of their physical abilities, can effortlessly access the services it offers. The creation of this advanced system also is a collaborative effort with our city attorney's office and our city clerk's office. Their expertise and insights were critical in ensuring that the kiosk not only meets all... not only meets all legal and regulatory requirements, but also addresses the specific needs of our diverse community. The kiosk allows for the city clerk's office to post agendas, announcements and other important information from any location with updates made instantaneously. The system's efficiency and ease of use marks a significant advancement in how we manage and share information with the public. The project reflects the city's ongoing commitment to utilizing technology to improve public services, making information more accessible and ensuring that our systems are inclusive for all. The ID Department extends its gratitude to the city clerk and the legal department. We extend our gratitude to the IT Department for their work on this program, which resulted in a robust and user-friendly system that will significantly benefit the entire community. With the, the work that's going on downtown, you know, we have, have now buildings coming down. There's trees that were growing up in those buildings and everything. But with a lot of that, as people come downtown, I'm sure they're like, ooh, what is this? What's going on? What's next? And so we kind of recommend they go to the Create Tyler website, which is for both the city and for the county. So people can know of just the different goings-ons and what roads are closed, what work is being done throughout Tyler and specifically downtown. And so that's the Create Tyler website for that information. And then finally, as you probably drove through, coming to the council meeting today, school is back in session. And so our police department is busy today. As they help with Tyler ISD, making sure that all children here in Tyler have a good, safe first day. And whatever, the second day and third day is be safe too. But it is something where we do ask that people follow the traffic laws. They're mindful to give us a little extra time to get through school zones as that resumes this week.
That it? Any other comments or questions for the city manager? All right, I think Councilman McKeller has a comment.
Yes, I would, thank you. I, I want to say thanks to Mr. Davis, if it's okay with you and me, the attorney. Thank you for coming forth to talk about anything that's happening in District 3. I will get with you and you can show me exactly what you're talking about in regards to the pond. I do jog there three times a week. I was there as of last night and people were out there fishing. So I'll get with you so you can show me exactly what you're talking about. And thank you so much for that. And thank you.
And on that one, Parks Director Leanne Robinett is actually going to prepare some information for council because we do have a pump that's down over there and a Faulkner Park pump. So trying to get both those pumps restored for, for that. So there may be, as far as this picture shows, there's some just moss growing in there. It's also down Faulkner Park that we have that's having some issues there. And that's related to just pumps that need to be replaced and just availability of getting those pumps. But she can also join you in on that one to assist with any conversation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we can't, we're not uploading this item back up. Talk to Ms. McKeller. She, she's going to work with you and I appreciate that. And thank you for coming. All right, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.